This conference will now be recorded.
I just texted Justin.
I know he was around earlier. He had sent an email out. He probably will be popping in here any minute.
So I had my first instance of coming down Monroe from the, what, east, thinking I was going to go across the bridge tonight, only to get redirected first time. I'll get used to it, but.
I feel like we need a theme song while we're waiting.
We could work on that.
For some reason, I have the Jeopardy song going through my head. I don't think that.
Oh, Justin just texted me that the meeting link isn't working. I'll just tell him, but everybody else.
Up on our village website and couple spots, and it's also, I believe Marina sent it out this morning.
Yeah, which one did I use?
I used the website.
I clicked on from the meeting notice.
I did it from the calendar on the homepage.
It's out there several places. We do our best.
Here he is. There he is.
Yeah, sorry. I apparently got the wrong meeting link, so I had a few technical difficulties. Is my camera working at all, or is my Wi-Fi too slow tonight?
We don't see your face.
All right. Well, are we ready to start meeting?
Yes, we are. Justin, this is Dorothea. If I can just really quick, I just wanted to introduce Marina Pacheco to the Village, to the planning board. She's going to be your new secretary. If there's any, I think everybody has had a chance to speak during our emails, which I'd like to thank. And she's a great asset to the village. We're thrilled to have her. And I know she's going to be an asset to your board. So from there, I'm going to let her take over. She's got the go-to-meeting links. So Justin, I know you're still as a backup for that, so we'll keep that the same right now. And if there's any problems concerned, just let me know. But you guys are in good hands.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dorothea. Welcome, Marina. Great to have you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye. I'll see you in the morning.
Are you still working on your camera there, Justin?
I don't think my camera is going to be working any better than it is now. So unfortunately, it's something, I have issues with this computer.
Okay. Do you usually use a motion to call the meeting to order?
Yes. So are we ready to do that? We're turning it over to you here. Well, first of all, we have our announcement about. My audio breaking up? All right. I killed my camera. Hopefully, is that working any better?
Yes.
I think you've got audio from your.
You're right in the chat.
Okay, so Justin, I muted caller two. I think that you're dialed in on your phone, and you've got audio on your web client or on your PC client. So if you just use one or the other, I think you'll be all set.
All right. Can we just mute everybody that's not on the board, for starters?
I think you're all set now. I muted caller two, which I think, was that yours as well? Were you dialed in on phone?
No, it was not me.
No. Okay, I muted caller two then, so that was the one that the echo is coming in on, so we can unmute them when we public input.
Okay. All right. Sorry, but for the, it seems this is a routine matter for every single meeting I end up being on, but anyway, let's go ahead and with the motions to open the meeting. So first of all, we are meeting via virtual meeting pursuant to orders of Governor Cuomo and consistent with the coronavirus pandemic. The notice to this meeting is on the village website. There is a link on the village website that any member of the public can use to join this meeting and observe the discussions and deliberations. With that said, I would like to go ahead and make a motion to call this meeting to order.
Second.
All right. And how do we all vote?
Aye.
Aye. Um, can I please roll call?
Uh, if you want to do it that way, that is fine.
Is it typically how you do, or do you do, I'm sorry, I'm just mocking what other boards do. If you don't want me to call roll call, that's absolutely fine. If you want it all ayes and nays, whatever you would like.
Usually for opening a meeting and things that we always agree to, we just say that all five members are present and all five members agreed to open the meeting.
Okay.
If we have, we can do a roll call for all votes on actual applications. That seems like a wise idea. Okay, so let's note the time is 6:38. The date is February 22nd, 2021. All five members of the planning board are present, along with our recording secretary, our attorney, Mindy Zoglin, and we have several guests that have also joined the meeting and applicants. The building inspector is also present, I believe. And with that, let's go ahead and go into conflicts of interest. Does anyone have any conflicts of interest to disclose for any applications tonight?
No.
I have none either. Okay, so let me go over how I wanted to run things tonight. We have a couple of applications on the agenda. I believe the Courtney Circle application is, that is new, but I'm hoping that will go fairly quickly. So I would like to put that one first. Then the other applications are for eight to 10 machine place. That's been an ongoing discussion. I would like to do that second. And right now, for members of the board, what I would like to do is go ahead and discuss the questions, discuss all our applicants, our questions we have with the applicant, discuss any thoughts or concerns the board has. But I'd like to hold off on votes until the end of the meeting. So usually, we have lengthy discussions over what to put in findings and what complies with requirements. So I'd like to have the discussions with all the, with both applicants first, and then have all of our discussions over findings second, and followed by votes on everything. Any comments from the board?
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
Okay. So with that, let's start with for Courtney Circle. And then the general process here is, please go ahead and introduce yourself and introduce your proposal and your plans and some of your key design criterias and thoughts, and then we'll open it up for some discussions by the board.
Okay. Can you all hear me?
Yep, you're, go ahead and start.
Hi, I'm Maggie Neri. It's my husband Ryan. For Courtney, we are proposing to do an addition to extend our family room out and bump out our kitchen. And we are requesting a 570 square foot, single-story addition. We are well within our side setbacks and our rear setbacks. Lot coverage is well within the correct ratio. We're on almost half an acre, so it's a pretty big property. The addition won't be very visible from the street. We have a large row of trees on the side. Beyond that, I don't know what more I should be sharing.
Okay, so you're building, it's a one-story addition, and we can ask some of our typical questions we have. My understanding is you're not putting any, adding any exterior lighting. Is that correct?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay. And then other questions we look at is the primary things we're interested in is how this can impact other properties. So lighting, if you install new lights, we just want to make sure that the lighting stays on your property and does not travel onto your neighbor's property. If you're not installing any new lighting, then that is not a concern. Other things are drainage. We want to make sure that as you construct a building, it'll usually have gutters and drainage systems. We want to make sure that stormwater stays on your property. It does not travel onto your neighbor's property. So can you talk a little bit about what you're proposing for drainage for the new addition?
We would just like to extend the family room bump out, connect it to our existing downspouts, which will be discharged at grade into the middle of our yard. We are pretty far away from our neighbor's yard. I don't know how it would impact our neighbor at all.
Okay, Steve, are you online?
Yes.
All right, Steve, did you have any concerns about their drainage proposal?
No, they got a very large yard, and the way the addition will be set up in the back of the yard and the way the downspouts are going to drop, they will not affect the neighbors at all.
Okay. That sounds excellent. Can you tell us a little bit about the materials you're going to be using? The normal theme in the village, when you're putting additions on, is you generally try to match the existing house. It generally looks like this, but I was wondering if you could comment a little bit on your choice of materials for windows and siding and trim and things like that.
The siding will match existing. I believe we have a, I think it's a cedar shake shingle. It's about like a 15, 17-inch profile. We'll use the exact same material. The roof will just be the exact same certainty landmark pro architectural shingle that we have to match existing. Windows will look like the existing wood windows that we have on our first floor, but we're proposing to the HPP that they allow us to do fiberglass. But from the street, they will look like the existing wood windows that we have on the west elevation and the east elevation and all elevations.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Do any other members of the board, do they have any other questions?
Just a brief one. So I did walk out to the site this afternoon, and I knocked, but nobody was around, so I just walked around to the back. And it seems like there is adequate drainage, as the building inspector was mentioning. And it looks like there's a downspout now that points to the north, I guess, which is towards the back of the lot. So would you just kind of relocate that so it continues to point up north where you've got the most surface area?
Yeah.
Okay. That makes sense.
Okay. One other question I had is, let me look through. Mindy, did you have a question?
A question I see also Susan had a question, so I'll defer to her question first.
Yeah, mine is just something I can't read. What is the, the distance between the split rail fence and the side of the addition?
We had a survey done when we bought the house in 2014, and the survey shows 16.2 feet. And I believe the fence is right on the lot line. So we're proposing to go out about three foot, six inches. So we're still well within our setback.
Mindy, go ahead.
Yeah, the, the application that you submitted, you know, I see was under a ZBA form, and it was crossed out and it says planning. And it reads like you're seeking a relief from the section of the village code that requires minor site plan review for a structure exceeding 400 square feet. And this was on the ZBA part of the agenda, not the planning board part of the agenda. So I just wanted to clarify that the relief that you're seeking is from the planning board, not the zoning board, and you're looking for minor site plan review, not a variance.
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Was this noticed as a, as a variance or as a site plan review?
I believe just a site plan review.
Yeah.
Yes, it says site plan review. Just, I didn't have her do a whole new form, and I didn't kind of realize the language, but this is purely for a site plan review.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. I had one additional question, which was, I had noticed that the neighbor has a tree that's basically right on the property line, right? It looks like it's right in about the vicinity where the addition is going to be constructed. And we've had this come up before, and I don't, and we're concerned about how construction would impact trees in the neighbor's yard. So.
Yeah, I believe that's our tree. The fence runs right in the middle of it. I believe it's our tree. She's, she's always told us it was our tree. We prune it. I think we're far enough back in terms of the foundation that it's not a problem. I can get a measurement if that's needed.
I don't think that's, go ahead, Steve, are you talking?
Yeah, yeah, I just want to, it's an arborvitae, and if you, if you know anything about trees, an arborvitae has a very restricted root base. It isn't a wide root space. It's a more downward root base. And the distance away from the addition is from that tree will never affect the growth of that tree at all.
The one I was referring to is, it looked like it's about a 75-foot-tall maple tree.
That's the one I was referring to. That's our maple. But I think that it's about halfway back from our existing rear facade to our rear fence line. I don't believe that we're going back far enough and to a depths with our crawl space that it will be a problem.
Okay. So if it's your tree, okay, you're allowed to modify your own landscaping. But we're just trying to make sure if it was, if it was, my concern is if it was in the neighbor's yard, that it's not accidentally harmed. So I think the general normal procedure is to put up a temporary fence, like a plastic fence or something like that, that's say, you know, five to 10 feet from the tree trunk, and keep heavy equipment from that area so that it don't damage the roots. I think that's the general process. Steve, you may have some comments on that.
No, actually, that's, I mean, it's their tree. They, you know, I mean, I don't believe the addition is going close at the harem. And it's, I mean, it's their tree. They can do with it what they wish. If it was a neighbor's tree, then it would be a different, might be a different story.
Okay. There any other comments from board members?
No, just, just a minor, a minor comment, I guess, that having visited the site, it does seem like there's some visual buffering with neighboring property. It seems like there is enough space for the addition that's been discussed, and I didn't see significant problems with the way that it was proposed.
Yeah.
Good, thank you.
My opinion as well.
I agree.
I share, yeah, I share that opinion.
All right, so with that, I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Second.
How do you vote?
Aye.
Aye. So let the record show, all five members of the board voted to open the hearing. If anyone in the audience would like to comment, please raise your hand or unmute yourself and state your name and address, and go ahead and provide what you would like to say to the board.
Justin, at this point, I'll also unmute the telephone caller in case there's something to say that was having echo problems previously. Telephone caller, if you have any comments on this, you can go ahead. I just muted them again. Seems like we've got the same echo issue.
Just so you know, that may, that may be Bill. Bill was, Bill McBride wanted to listen on the meeting tonight, and I know he's. That might be Bill.
No comment.
All right, since we have no comments from the public, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
How do you vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Again, all five members have agreed to close the public hearing. So it sounds like you've answered all of our questions. I haven't heard any concerns. I'd like to reserve our vote and discussion of findings, move that towards the end of the meeting. You're welcome to stick around if you like and listen to that, or we, or you can leave and you can talk to our secretary tomorrow to get an update on the status of your application.
Thank you.
Okay, so with that, I'd like to move on to the next application, which is eight to 10 Shane Place. Okay, so first of all, we have a whole new, we have a new set of drawings, and we have a new landscaping layout, and we got updates on the parking layout. Who is representing the applicant here in the meeting? It looked like we had the engineer logged in, or you also have Mrs. Collins?
Well, I did think that the engineer was going to start off, but apparently he's logged off. So I can do the best I can and try and get him back on if we need him.
Okay, so there's been a lot of things pending with this application. The trustees had several matters before them that were resolved last week. They changed the zoning code so that the block 32 is now in the tavern overlay district. That is 10 Shane Place, I believe, correct? And that is also the region where the pavilion is located, is now in Tavern Overlay District. So Steve, with that, that satisfies all of, that satisfies the use concerns in the zoning code. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so this is now permitted use, and they did apply to the trustees for a modification for a special use permit to allow this pavilion to be used with the associated businesses that, I think there's four of them. Aladdin's, Lock 32, Simply Crepes, and also Power, correct? Okay, so that resolves all of the land use concerns, which is excellent. That's, glad to hear that that is resolved. The other, another outstanding matter was parking and compliance parking requirements. The trustees modified the zoning code to alter the parking requirements for the restaurants and presumably bars as well. And so the requirements have lessened, but I believe there's still a deficient by three parking spots. Is that correct, Steve?
Yes, yeah, they technically, with all the use in the, in the whole area, they are going to be, they, they should have five spaces for the accessory structure, and they're requesting to drop that to two.
Okay, how many total spaces is the entire site requiring for all the businesses on the site?
I believe, I don't have the numbers in front of me, Justin, but I believe it's like 156.
See, 156 total are required, are provided?
Yes.
All right, well, if you can look that up to make, to figure out the exact number required and the exact number provided, we just need to document that in our resolutions.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have the ability to do that at home, Justin.
Okay, so we'll touch, we'll touch it up on, in our resolutions and, in the final drafting of them. But they're deficient by three parking spots is what's of concern to us right now, out of 150-something. Approximately 156. Oh, I see, the engineer is back online. Can we unmute him?
I've sent an unmute request, but I think he'll still have to acknowledge something on his screen. There we go. You should be unmuted now. I still can't hear you.
Turn the volume up on your, if you're on a laptop, you have to turn the volume up on it. If you're on a laptop, typically there's a function button and then a speaker thing on the top line. Ed, can you hear me? Take your head, yes or no?
Okay.
Function button should be bottom left somewhere on the keyboard, FN. And then usually, upper line has a speaker, two different little speaker nomenclatures.
Still can't hear you. It could be you've got the, the wrong microphone input device selected as well. If that doesn't work, you could also make a phone call into the meeting so we can hear you.
Andy? Yeah.
I'm sending an unmute request to Mindy as well.
Yeah. No, actually, I muted myself. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't talking over somebody. So I had, while we're waiting for Mr. Perone to log in, may I ask a question about the, the relief that's being sought by this application?
Sure.
Okay, so it looks like the applicant is seeking two separate variances. One variance for parking and also a setback variance for the pavilion being essentially right on the lot line. So it read like one variance application, but it's really two variance applications in addition to site plan review.
That's my understanding. And Steve, can you, I don't know if you can clarify the code citations. It looked to me that parking citation is 210-25.2C1. I sent you an email with this, and the setbacks, I believe, is 210-25.5. If there's any issues with those, please let us know. And I think you worked on documenting. You said they're deficient on three parking spots. If you can update us on the setback deficiency, I would appreciate that.
Yeah, and Justin, the setback citation, I believe, is 210-22.5.
210-22.5. Thank you.
You're welcome.
They are, they are requesting a zero side yard setback.
And 10 feet is required?
Five feet, I believe. For an accessory structure.
Yeah, Steve is right about that. The, the. Yeah, Steve is right about that. The, the, the setback for the accessory structure is five feet under 210 dash 22.5. If it's a side yard or a VR yard and we went around, around, I think a month or two ago and determined it was not a front yard. So either way, it's got a five foot setback requirement.
Thank you. So Steve, what is your final determination? Is this a side yard?
Yes, I would, I would consider this a side yard, not, definitely not a front yard. It's not a backyard. I don't, I don't believe commercials should have a definition of side, front, back, but, I mean, in this case, it, it's based on the whole property. So I would consider the front yard of this property to be the main, the main street. So that would be the side yard.
Okay, thank you, Steve.
I could make a comment. The engineer just texted me. I guess he is trying to come in on the phone and he needs to have his phone unmuted.
I only see a, a single caller on phone. I can try unmuting that caller again. I'll, I'll give that a shot.
Hello?
But he's got more than one device going. Is that the problem?
Yeah, I think that might be it. Let me mute his, if, if that was Edward, Edward, let me mute his application and try again. Hi, can you hear us?
Hi, can you hear us?
Yes.
Hi, can you hear us?
Yes.
Yes. Hi, can you hear us?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, guys.
I, I actually wasn't saying that over and over again. That was the echo.
Unfortunately, there's a very severe echo where you repeat yourself many times over and over again.
He needs to turn down his computer speakers.
Yeah, I was gonna say, he might want to just turn the computer off in this line. You're better off being heard at than seen.
I texted him with that information as well. I don't know.
I got it. I got it. I'm on the phone. I'm on the phone. Hello?
We can hear you.
All right, now you, thank you. All right. Can you, can you all hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So where do you want me to start? You want me to do the presentation? I know you've done a great job so far. What I, I've listened to everything you've said so far. And I can do a further, more in-depth presentation for what we're proposing tonight, if you don't mind. And they are as follows. As you've indicated, Justin, as chair, what we're proposing to do. I know on the 16th of this month, this past week, that the village board did in fact make some major modifications for this whole area of shown place. So with that being said, we are proposing a pavilion. It will be a timber type structure. It will be 18 by 28 feet. It will have a two foot overhang all the way around. We have positioned the building, the structure and its overhang, overhang, overhang to be right on the, what we call the canal line or the blue line. So it will not be within the canal lands. It's still all on Jennifer Collins's property. Where we've positioned it, we've also provided at the request of the board from the last time, two handicapped spaces which meet New York State ADA requirements or federal, actually, ADA requirements. We're providing a landscaping area. We are going to granite curb where we have removed pavement to provide for better protection of the, a better protection for the, for the project. And, and it's, it's people that are going to be using this facility. We've made connections to both the, both adjoining restaurants, the Aladdin and lock 32. And this pavilion is to be intended to be used for all of the, all of the people that Jennifer does serve throughout the complex. That means simply grapes and all, crepes and all the other locations. We've provided in-depth landscaping plan. We are proposing a stamped concrete approach for the floor of the pavilion and the sidewalks. They will be in a, a pattern very similar to the existing pattern that we have, which is a basket weave. Our landscape architect thought it would be more appropriate. The basket weave is the, is the walkway between lock 32 and where this proposed pavilion is. And we're also providing green infrastructure. We're providing a rain garden with the various required New York State DEC plant materials. And we're also going to provide a bike rack. We don't show that on a drawing because we're looking for even, either your input or where we'll try to do it the best way, but we certainly would like you to also make that as a condition to provide a bike rack because I understand the village board and, and yourselves thought it was a good idea. As well as a fire pit. We have not located where we want to put the fire pit, but we want to at least let you know that today about putting a fire pit in that particular area. The other request was to provide a light that would be mounted on the timber pavilion to provide for protection and, and safety for the handicap folks that will be coming to the establishment. Now, this, this light will meet under your code of 210 dash 25.2. It will be dark sky compliant. It will be either between 27 Calvin to 3,000 Calvin, which is a warm light. And it will, it will, between point five foot candles and one foot candle. We'd like to keep it as bright as we can in this particular location so that it, it affords people a better safety access in and out of the pavilion as well as the surrounding restaurant locations. In addition to that, we're also providing a concrete sidewalk for the access for handicap folks. I think that's pretty much all of what I've wanted to present this evening. And I'll be more than happy to answer any questions as it relates to the site plan. I think, Justin, you and Steve were alluding to the fact that we are looking for also two variances. One, which is zero setback, which we consider the canal the sideline. And the other is reducing the parking from five spaces to two spaces. So I think that's pretty much it for our presentation. I'll be more than happy to answer the questions. I truly apologize why my audio could not connect. My video could connect, but my audio, and I don't understand why that is. But we will talk to my IT guys tomorrow about that. Okay? So with that, I'll close my presentation on the, on this, on this application.
Ed?
Yes.
Yes, Steve here. You're also, you, you are planning on taking all the roof leaders and tying them into the water garden, correct?
That is correct. That is the purpose of the, of the rain garden. Yes. The downspouts will be connected and discharged to that, that, the rain garden that's located in the, we'll call it the south or the northwest corner or north, yes, northwest corner or in the northwest corner area. Yes.
All right, thank you.
One other comment. I believe when I spoke with Steve, that we would not only put lighting on the corner of the pavilion for the handicap spot, but also on the corner of the number, then John Place, Shane Place, which is the corner where lock 32 is. So there would be sufficient lighting from one angle.
That, that's correct, Jen. Good catch. I forgot about that. Yes.
And those lights, those indicators will have to be presented and approved by the HDB.
That would be fine.
So Steve, we, we have the drawings that indicate the location of the light fixtures?
Pardon?
The question was, do we have any drawings that indicate the location of the light fixtures or is that still in the works?
I don't think we have a drawing. I didn't request them to make a whole new drawing, but the, the light for the handicap spaces will go right in the middle of the two spaces on the timber, you know, the soffit of the timber building. The other light will be on the, which would be the northwest corner of lock 32.
Okay, is there any, do any board members have any concerns or want further clarification?
I want to know who turned the echo machine on.
Yeah, can we mute caller two? Cause this transcript is going to be very bad.
Yeah, I've been doing that. I just want to let him talk when, when he's got pieces to chime in on.
Okay, is the echo situation improved?
Yes, as long as the caller is muted.
Any current ideas on the location of the fire pit or the bike rack?
Can make a comment at least. So the bike racks, there are existing bike racks. So we would anticipate that those would stay. And so one of those is between the existing patio and the canal path. There's another across the street at Coal Tower. If it is still the wish of someone on the board to add more than that, we certainly can. That's, that's something we're very flexible about, but we would certainly at least keep the ones that are there. The fire pit, we still believe the best location is between the pavilion and lock 32. But are open to, you know, other suggestions, but that seems to make the most sense.
For the bike rack, right now on the design drawing, there's a space that says stamped concrete walk. Just what would be above where the landscape area is on the left. That's where the bike rack is now. Is that where you would project it to probably stay?
Yes.
Okay. And then it would be that landscape area that might, you might steal some space from to put in the fire pit and some seating?
Yeah, so it says landscaped area and that's where we would anticipate that going.
And do you anticipate any seating in any regard within the rain garden landscape area at this time?
My, my vision is that that kind of seating will be portable. So much the way that has been done the last season, we can put Adirondack style chairs out there wherever they make the most sense. You know, before this version of my career, which was, which is a very recent version, I was in higher education for years. And what we would do on college campuses is often you let people start to move around and then you see where they naturally gather. So I sort of regard it the same way that seating can be placed wherever it ends up making the most sense in groupings in any of those landscape areas. Because now with this new version, should, should it be approved that we move to the, the two spaces instead of five? We've gained a lot of green area that, that chairs can be in any or all of those places.
Great.
Yeah.
Yeah, the other, the other thing I just want to mention too, and actually Bob had talked about this in there. The village has an agreement with the Canal Corporation. So the area between the pavilion and the existing pavilion is also available. If people wanted to, you know, want to be out in the sun and sit outside the pavilion, they'll be able to take the chairs and sit outside on the walkway between the pavilion and the existing pavilion. Because there is an existing agreement for the use of that space for the village.
I saw Casey's hand up. I had a comment too. Go ahead, Casey.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to also piggyback on what Jenny said about seating. It's really important right now with the state as well because there's so many guidelines and stuff, this thing within groups. And the party size changes so much that that, that movable seating is really important based on who's coming and how it's going to change within the state. So similar to what we did this summer, that the portable seating is, is very helpful in today's climate because things can change relatively quickly. So I anticipate especially as we get through the, the tail end of this pandemic, hopefully knock on wood. But it'll probably rotate quite a bit based on how those guidelines come out and group size coming in.
Casey, in the past, you had mentioned a little bit about having a retainer around the area by which you serve in to meet liquor license laws. With regards to the entrances on this plan, I, I do like sort of the walkways in they, I think they look visually appealing. As you think about the area that is closest to the canal and the pavilion there, will there need to be a rope line or something there as well, like we've talked about before? And as you think about the portability of chairs into the space that Steve was just talking about, it may present challenges if there's a rope line, but do you think that's going to be required anyway?
Yeah, they'll, they'll definitely be required, will be required to have some sort of rope line. That, that does not have to enclose the entire space. However, you're still able to have open walkways in and out. And you can have numerous points of entry as well. So essentially what the state liquor authority on our end looks for is just a delineation of space, not necessarily a confinement of people. So a, a simple rope hung within, you know, the outline border of the space should suffice.
And also, also signage that says no alcohol beyond this point.
Correct. Yep.
I don't have any further comments on my two items.
I had a, just a question for Steve and/or our attorney, Ms. Oglan. Do we need to have a seating layout or proposal? Or is it acceptable to leave it nebulous? I'm not even sure if we have a total number of seats listed in this application.
I don't think that you need to have a seating layout to consider the site plan because the seats are not going to be fixed to the ground. I mean, you're really just looking at the footprint and the areas around it. If, if we're dealing with a restaurant or, you know, something like that, and we needed to calculate parking needs due to seating, then that would be a, a consideration. But here we are, I, I think that I hear Steve saying that we're assuming that this, the, this is just going to be alternate seating for pre-existing seats in the served, in the restaurants that are being served by the pavilion.
Correct. And since it is, my understanding and is that since it isn't fixed seating, it's not a restaurant. You don't need a seating plan because it's never, I mean, it's going to move and, and flow with the use.
Okay, thank you for providing that input. I think we, this board has had discussions about the parking and the overwhelming opinion was making this available for public use. Vastly outweighed any parking concerns we had. So we all thought it was fantastic to add the landscaping and fantastic to add a great public space for the public. And we also found that this complied with directives in the comprehensive plan and local waterfront revitalization program by improving access to the canal and public amenities in the waterfront region. So this has been a, a great benefit and obtaining those benefits at the expense of losing a few parking spots. What everyone on this board has previously indicated that, that, that was a fine exchange. And we discussed this further at, Ms. And we discussed this further that Ms. Collins has stated that she wasn't concerned about the lack, loss of parking for her businesses that are on the property. And we heard similar statements from Casey Dunlabey where parking situations have changed. People are now using ride sharing to get there. This is the most walkable place in the village where a large chunk of customers come by just, are people that are just walking along the canal path. So I think that all makes a lot of sense.
Yep. The other thing I want to mention in regards to the parking is prior to the, the code change, we were 17 spaces behind before this. So the, the change and everything makes actually the parking situation better down there overall, for all.
If I may go back to the bike rack for just one moment, this is following up with the engineer and design architects comments on location. Jenny, it might have been yours. As you look at the plan now, the bike rack location is proximal to the canal path where bicyclists are required to walk through that district at the present time. And it's sort of prime real estate for the wonderful work that I think you guys have put into and thoughtfulness in terms of the landscaping. Might there be an opportunity or just a consideration, we can talk it over maybe, to put it down toward the handicap parking to the right? It may squeeze out a couple of the bushes or shrubs. But what if you were to put it off of Shane Place to the right of the two parking spots such that the bicyclists, when they come in, they can actually ride on the road and park on the road, opening up and expanding the area where you may have the fire pit and steering back some of the landscaping for the canal side of this age?
I think that is a really good suggestion and I said that you are a bicyclist and I am not, so I, I would be happy to defer to where it makes sense to you. You know, we're, we're trying to facilitate all the various ways that people can use the property. So I, I think we have, you know, again, if, if we're moving from the five to the two, we've gained a lot of space to, within which to be flexible and I, I think that that would work fine.
I think we just need to be careful about encroaching on some of the access needs of the handicap parking spaces.
Hundred percent agree and would think if one were to do that, you would steal from the existing shrubbery or landscaping. It may give those at the fire pit in that landscape seating area, a better view of the canal and the passerby's as well. And put the modes of transportation and parking in a similar location. Just a thought, you know, I'm frankly comfortable with either, but if it's easy to do, it might be something to think about and I don't know if anybody else on the board might have comments.
Dave, I don't know if you can see my screen. Is it around where the red dot is that you're thinking about putting it?
Go a little lower. Yeah, right in there, like from the street. So shorten up the curb a little bit, like squeeze the curb a little to the, to the right and just steal like half a car's, yeah, on a vertical, right from the bottom to, to halfway up, maybe steal that little area perpendicular to the road. Just, again, just an idea, maybe anywhere in that area is fine. But again, it's that idea of taking it from the canal side and bringing it to the street side and bringing those together.
Now, there's other, this is a pretty large property and there's lots of places around some of the other buildings as well. We don't necessarily need to stick a bike rack in the landscaping. But like at Coal Tower, there are lots of things right adjacent to the sidewalk, I believe over there. I don't have a mental view in front of me. And lock 32 may have, that whole building may have a few opportunities, so does Aladdin's. You know, I'm not that picky about where they go as to, as long as there is a few bike racks around. I think that makes sense.
And this is Casey at lock 32. David, I would love regardless of where we land on this, to, to tap you, possibly Renee, some other biking, walking enthusiasts to come down to the property as we get going and as we start to see the layout and how it flows and, and try out whatever can work, especially from someone that, you know, navigates a bike more than us maybe with, with entry point and convenience and certainly safety as well. So just an idea on my end, I'd be happy to meet down there at any point and, you know, at any point of the project and, and go through and figure out the best way for, for us to lay out any sort of rack.
I would like to second Justin's comment as well, which is there may be plenty of other places that we can park a bike rack that doesn't need to encroach upon some real nice greenery that's being put in. Right? There's other, there's other paved spots we could put it. Sorry, Steve, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to say the, you still got the red dot on there, Justin? The southwest corner next to the green, next to the lawn.
Let me see here. My red dot's not cooperating right now.
Yeah. But there's a little lawn area up in the, if you're looking at the drawing, it's in the upper right corner of the pavilion. Yeah. Yep. So put a bike rack right there. Can you partly use the overhang, the two-foot overhang to protect the bikes next to the lawn. It's out of the way of, of killing the green or taking a green space in the front. And then if you're walking the bike on the canal, you're right there.
I would strongly second Casey's suggestion and say that, you know, this is going to look very, very different than it ever has before. And, you know, maybe David, you, you come over as we are starting to get underway here and we can all envision it better. And between Casey and my son and you, I think we can figure that out as the landscaping unfolds. And importantly, still across the street, there, there is space by Coal Tower, there is space by number seven Shane Place. So I'm, I'm open to us doing whatever makes sense as it becomes more, you know, it becomes more visually obvious what would make sense.
Yeah.
So my suggestion is that we just put a condition of approval in here that bike racks be installed in quantity and location found deemed suitable by the building inspector.
I'm, I'm fine with that. I think that's a great idea.
And Justin, to that point, can we make it such that it's not specific to this site plan, but to any of Ms. Collins' properties?
Well, the plan is for the, her entire property. Yeah, I think that would be up to Steve then is if we, the bike racks are in quantity and location deemed appropriate to the building inspector, we could say anywhere on the parcel. I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I would agree. It has to be this parcel, not, you know, any other parcel that, that may be owned by the same property owner someplace else.
Yes, correct.
Okay, thank you.
It is all one parcel, all according, at least as best I can tell, it, it's all one parcel.
And in doing that, it allows you to look at that current space in the design where it's basically just the bike rack. It's a placeholder. There's nothing there. You can expand that to better use the space for the fire pit and expand out the, the landscaping.
Yeah, it, it sounds like there's some existing bike parking there in, in our code. As I was just looking at it, it does say that however, in no case shall a use provide less than two spaces or be required to provide more than 10 spaces. So I, I understand that this all constitutes one parcel for multiple buildings. I, I guess my question would be how many uses are there? And do we have to go down the path of figuring out how many spaces are actually given? Or do we just say that we're in the ballpark and, and lay them out as it makes sense?
I think you have to take the application for this space on its own and can't, you know, we're not looking at the whole parcel right now to, you know, to do the whole bike rack. I think what we're looking at is this application, this space, a bike rack required in this space. If there's other work being done on the parcel, then you, you deal with that as it comes.
And I think our discussion was to leave that decision of quantity up to the building inspector. He's the code enforcement officer and whatever he approves should be consistent with code requirements.
That makes sense.
Yep.
Okay, just a couple of other questions. Did any members of the board have any concern about circulation patterns here? We've had a variety of discussions of the locations of parking spots and orientation of parking, parking spots and the walkways and the ropes and the sidewalks leading into the pavilion. Are there any other concerns amongst the board about any of?
Not from me. I'm good.
None for me. Looks really nice.
I didn't have any other concerns either.
I'm good. I do have one question. Can you hear me? Here you go. Okay, I wasn't sure if my mic was on or off. The new engineer didn't, I didn't see a, an elevation provided. So my question is, I'm pretty sure you're just going to use the same elevation as the, as the other, the other drawing?
I can also, I'll go ahead and unmute Mr. Peron here and I'll make it a little bit of echo for a moment.
To answer your question, the answer is yes, it's going to be the same structure. We understand that the architect, Mr. Pope, has got to go back to, to the historical board for final certificate, certificate of authorization to use that structure. So the answer is yes, it's the same structure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And again, what we talked about before, let's bring up a couple other missed topics. Signage, there is going to be a building mounted sign that's going to be on this pavilion. I believe it was on the, at the roof level and approximately in the center. Is that correct?
Be honest, I, I am puzzled by what that sign mounted was even supposed to be. I, I think that it was a placeholder because the existing pavilion that was done in 95 with the canal and the village and my father and so forth had a, a sign there. I'm not certain that we want any sign similar to that somewhere small on the structure. I'm still hoping to have a, a plaque in honor of Ed Collins, but it would certainly not be that, that roofline kind of structure. So unless the village wants to have some kind of signage there naming it, I, I don't envision, I mean, I, it, could it say Shane Place Plaza? Could it, could it say something? It, it certainly could, but that is not something that I conceive of as necessary.
Any signage would be, would have to come through me to go through the HPP approved by the historic preservation board prior to installation. Mindy had had her hand up for a question.
Thanks, Steve. Justin, when you were mentioning access, I was wondering whether the fire chief has commented on whether there might be fire access in the event that timber structure caught on fire?
There, I am the fire marshal, Mindy, and, and yeah, the, the excess laneway has been dealt with and, and they have access to the front face and through those handicap spaces if they need to get at the front and they do have access to the canal way.
Excellent. Thank you.
Going back to elevation for just a minute, during your comment, it led me to look at the design map. And when I see R equals five inches there, does that mean it's raised five inches? And is that like a surrounding raised or is that what it means in fact? I don't know. So on the, you'll see R equals five inches around all landscape areas?
Hold on, mute Mr. Peron.
You're talking about the curbing, Dave.
That's, so there, there is curbing around all the landscape areas?
Yes, to keep people from driving into it. Yes.
Okay, good. And to some extent, this then question would go to Casey. Can curbing create by itself a designated area that you'd have to not step over in order to serve into?
I, I don't believe so. I, I could check into that, but it's, it's worth a look. But I, I'm, yeah, I, I don't believe so. I think it needs to be more like fence-like rope, rope containment, but I can certainly check into it.
Yeah, even so, around that raised area, you could do something nice. But so that is a, it's a raised concrete curb? Is that what that would be?
I think it was granite.
Yeah, I'm not sure if they're proposing a granite curb or a concrete curb. I don't know if that's still on here somewhere.
I thought I saw granite.
It's granite. It is a granite curb. It's a five inch wide, six inch high granite curb.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Justin, you still here?
No, I'm still here. I'm looking through the list of, of other site plan related issues. I think we've discussed them all at one time or another. We've discussed lots of things at one time or another. So we've discussed their snow removal plans, what are not changing over existing and the amount of area they need to plow is going to decrease. Waste and trash management are something we can look at, but again, that's not changing. And, and Steve, I presume their existing trash facilities are deemed adequate in your opinion?
Yes. Yeah, they're going to use the same existing setup for all the trash that, that currently exists today.
And you had no concerns about the fire pit as well? Is that correct?
I'm not, I mean, I will have to review it. I'm going to have to, you know, obviously when it's proposed and what it is, we'll have to, you know, I have to look at what it is and what's required for any proximity. So at the time they propose it, the fire pit itself, that will be reviewed and then permitted.
Okay, so then we can have that as a condition that a fire pit is acceptable pending review by the fire marshal and building inspector for location suitability.
Yes. Keep any silent breaks. I'm getting my guitar out just so I'm not sitting here quiet.
Yeah, I, I take time to write notes and listen, so. And referring to the lighting, Steve, it sounded like you are, you found their suggestions to be adequate to comply with code and provide for public safety for the walkways and the parking area. Is that correct?
Yes. I believe Pierre wants to make a comment. Is that correct, Pierre? Can you, can somebody unmute him or you can unmute yourself, Pierre?
All right, I did it. I think I did it. Well, first of all, good evening, everybody. It's a pleasure seeing you all again. As the owner of Simply Craves Cafe, we are really, really excited about this pavilion. We're excited about the, the enthusiasm the village is putting behind it. Absolutely thrilled that Jenny, Andrew and Casey are, are the enthusiasm the village is putting behind it. Absolutely thrilled that Jenny, Andrew and Casey are, are driving the project. We think this is going to be a tremendous addition to, to the village and certainly for us as, as a business that will love to serve crepes and other great food from Simply Crepes on the pavilion. It's a we really appreciate what you're doing and look forward to seeing this as a reality this summer.
Okay, well, I guess we should open this up for public comment. We've had a lot of discussion here. So I can't remember if we opened a public hearing before on this or not. But I'll just make a motion to collectively open a public hearing for all three applications simultaneously. And any comments we happen to have from the public, we can reflect those in consideration for all three applications.
Okay, how do you vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I myself unanimous agreement to open the public hearing. Do we have any comments from the public?
Yes, hello?
Go ahead. Please state your name and address and present your comments for the record.
I sure will, Justin. It's Elisa Plummer, 66 South Main Street. Hi, everybody. First, I want to thank the board for their incredibly detailed and diligent work. I 1,000% support this. This is amazing. It's just going to add so much vitality to this area and support all of our businesses and our community and anybody visiting, really. So I say yes to all three of the items before you tonight, and I hope you approve it quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other people wishing to speak? Okay, Marina, did we receive any comments to the village by mail or email?
I believe that comments to the, to the board would come through Adorthea's emails. She did not let me know of anything regarding that tonight. And I'm trying to look into chat too, to see if there are any comments there, but I'm not seeing that. Justin, would you mind checking chat to see if anyone has written any comments?
There is nothing that I can see in the chat. Thank you, Marina, for reminding me of that, though.
I do, this is Steve. I do want to remind the board also that you, at one point, I'm not sure if you all got them, but pretty much every business owner down there wrote a letter to the, the village board in regard to approving and hoping that this comes to fruition.
Okay, thank you, Steve. I don't think we received those comments. Would appreciate if you would forward those to us when you receive them. So that they go to all the boards and not just the trustees. Thank you.
So I'll look through my email and if I've got them here, I'll send them to you guys.
Casey wanted to speak.
Thanks, Steve. Just, just real quick, I want to thank the board as well. I think what Pierre said was tremendous. I think that it's a great idea under normal circumstance. I think it's gonna bring a really cool, unique aspect to what's already a really spectacular space. I also think that the timing and urgency that this board specifically has shown is very much appreciated in the times that we're living and I know I personally, this is going to move the needle for, for lock 32 this summer as the nice weather gets here. So I just wanted to thank the board as well and share in my excitement with Pierre. I think that this has been something that's been really exciting to talk about with our customers and it's really brought a lot of businesses together over that mutual excitement to, to collaborate and, you know, work with Pierre on many items to compare well with, with beer. And who knew crepes and beer went well together, but we found out this past summer they did and we're going to continue growing that relationship. So, so just, just a quick thank you all.
Okay, thank you, Casey, and thank you, Jenny, and thank you, Steve. I know this has been a long process. It's, to say the least, it's taken a while to get through this. As you've observed, we've made pretty detailed review of this, offering some suggestions. And Ms. Collins, I would say you've been outstanding at being willing to listen and make a few tweaks that I think all of us have agreed have actually have made a slightly better project. So I think that's all good and they is finally coming to an end. So I will be all happy, I think, to see this come the warmer weather. So I'm glad to hear all the excitement about this.
I again have to say that it's been very much an adventure and a, and a labor of love. And while we're all patting ourselves on the back for sort of this unique, wonderful, novel idea, I have to just, I, I just must do this because I found a Brighton Pittsford Post article from March 1995 when the other pavilion was built. And as most of you know, that was a joint effort between the Canal Corp of a grant, the village, and then my father is a private funder. But in the, the map that was published in that article, and I, if anybody's, you know, kind of a trivia hysteria person, I can, I can send it to you. This very spot was labeled on that map in the Brighton Pittsford Post as a summer festival court slash off-season parking. So I have no idea how it ever became parking year round, but in 1995, I have to say it, Ted, Ted Collins had this vision that his property would have this summer festival court. And it's only taken us whatever number of years that is to make that come to fruition. But on top of this, just feeling like the right thing to do for all of our tenants, for the village, it, it brings a great deal of personal satisfaction to see that that might actually happen this year. I'm, I'm extremely excited that we might be able to make that vision of, of a couple of decades ago come true. So thank you for your consideration. I, I think all of the suggestions have made it nothing but a, a better project, you know, Casey and Andrew and Pierre and I started throwing this around in the summer and it's much bigger and better than, than it was around a table or two. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, everyone. I believe we have the public hearing still open. Are there any more public comments? Okay, no one has indicated they would like to speak, so I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing for all three applications for eight to 10 Shane Place.
Second.
Thank you.
How do you vote?
Aye.
Aye. So again, unanimous opinion to close the public hearing. And that said, I think our next matters are working on drafting our findings. Does anyone else have any comments before we get into that? Okay, so if the applicants, if you want, you're welcome to stick along through this. This is usually a somewhat tedious time where we go and take a look at our review requirements and discuss them as a board and come up with a couple sentences or the review requirements stating why it complies or does not comply with each requirement. So with that, I think we can go ahead and start by taking a look at where we started today, which is on Courtney Circle. Mr. Lightgib, do you have the ability to open, I emailed around a draft copy of some of these resolutions? If you have the ability to present that?
I believe I do. Give you one moment here. Are we good?
Yeah, can you zoom in a little bit?
Yes. What's that look?
Yep, okay. It looks like we forgot to put applicant's name and the address and all that in here. So this will be, that'll be filled in for the Courtney Circle application. So if we scroll down here, this will be, this is residential, so it'll be a type two action for a seeker. Mindy, do you know the citation for that offhand?
I'm just pulling it up. Give me two seconds and I'll, I'll get it for you.
Hey, Justin, this is Dan. I'm going to duck out now because just the process portion of things.
Sure thing.
Unless, no, Justin Velestra, unless he's needed for anything.
I don't have any questions for you that are urgent. I was kind of wondering what was going on with the, the bridge construction project. We've taken a little bit of a look at that, but I don't think we need to get into that tonight. And I think by the end of this, we'll be plenty, we'll have gone through plenty of discussion here.
Okay, and we have a trustees meeting tomorrow. So if you have specific questions, I'm sure we'll talk about it. But if you have specific questions, shoot me an email or a text and I'll make sure they get answered.
Okay, thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Okay, so the first couple things, so Steve, we'll get the seeker citation, but residential is exempt from is a type two action for single-family homes.
Yeah, I have it now, Justin.
Go ahead, Mindy.
I'm sorry. It's 6 NYCRR 617.5C11, which is the expansion of a single-family residence on an approved lot.
Great. Justin, do you usually just delete the other option here? How do you indicate the selection? Okay.
All right, and Steve, you had concluded this property was not within 500 feet of any of these, the canal highways or municipal boundaries. Is that correct? So it did not get referred to county planning.
Correct. It's, it's, it's 674 feet from the, the town line.
Okay, thank you. So it's not subject to that. And then it's a type two action and seeker and it's nowhere near the waterfront area, so we don't have to do a waterfront consistency review.
So that's going to be B, which is A now, right?
Yeah, pick one. That's fine. And I don't think, this is not subject to any county review. And I don't think that's relevant anyway.
Check number three. If you want to back up and pick a different one.
Yep, okay.
A.
A.
It looks good. Okay.
Yep.
There we go. Thank you.
Okay, and Steve, you have not identified any so are no variants of the required for this and it complies with the zoning code, correct?
Right.
Okay, so we can modify that to say it complies with the zoning code.
And the and the application complies with zoning code.
Okay, next things is the comprehensive plan and waterfront revitalization program. I don't think are relevant to this because it's a single-family home addition.
Should I just write NA?
Yeah.
I think you might have a lot of NAs.
Hey, not, not to be picky, but with the zoning code.
Thanks, Steve. Do we want to fill out any reasons that it's not NA for vehicular traffic? It's in the back of the house. I don't know how much detail we need to add there.
A single-family home. Well, it's noted in our minutes that we found these not applicable because it's an addition to a single-family home. That's good enough for me, good enough for everybody else.
Try to add some notes so it's easier later.
Okay.
Just a brief comment for number two, should we put reference to it's within the, what is it, non-permeable surface? Right, under the 25% threshold, that to what extent does a comprehensive plan play a part in single-family home additions? Probably not much, but if it exceeds 25% of lot coverage, it would, right? So that's why we would consider it not. Is there anything better?
Yeah, it's, it's it's not comprehensive.
Right, that's a zoning code issue, not a comprehensive plan issue.
All right, thanks.
Again, I'd say pedestrian and bicyclist access is not applicable.
Okay.
Again, all the adjacent uses are residential, so no changes. And parking is again not applicable. No changes are proposed. What landscaping, it's already landscaped the site and no major changes are proposed, correct? No signs, so I guess that's not applicable. And there's no changes to lighting. I guess same for that. No changes are proposed to drainage. Well, stormwater, they are doing the downspouts, but they're doing them consistently to what they had done before. So I, I think it makes sense to just state that the building inspector found their drainage proposal to be adequate. No changes to that. I think there's lots of NAs here.
There's more roof coverage to shovel if we get a big snowfall. I think we'll be all right.
And we had no, no comments from the fire marshal that I'm aware of.
Nope.
Can we go back to 14?
Yep.
Yeah, I, I think you can make an affirmative finding that the proposal will not adversely affect the health, safety and welfare of the general adjacent property owners and community.
So I guess that's just no comments. Or no, no concerns. Okay, I, I don't think there's much else in here other than the vote. Did anyone else have anything to add?
Mindy. Yeah, Justin, I just wanted to add to my two cents and say you did a great job making a form resolution based upon the explicit content of the code, bravo.
Well, that's what we did, just read the code, copied and pasted, and we go through this tedious task now of doing this for all of the items that are in the code, so thank you, Mindy. I think Mr. Lightgibb worked on this as well. I can't remember who all worked on these templates. So it said, I'd state that whatever application requirements were not submit, were not met with this application, they provided adequate detail for us to evaluate the impacts between the application and the testimony of the applicant at tonight's hearing. And I'm amenable to waiving the balance of application requirements and deeming the project adequate for us to make a determination.
Is that a motion?
I think that's a discussion, we can wrap it all in there. Does that, is there agreement on that, that we can waive the balance of application requirements?
I would agree, yes.
Yes. Mindy, should we make a separate motion for that? Okay. Um, now, in terms of any conditions of approval, I don't see the need for any other than these two. The preservation board shall review it. And we normally have the stock language of it expires, they don't get a building permit within a year. And if that happens due to contractor issues, they can come back before us and we can just renew the approval.
Um, if I might add, we've talked to a few contractors at this point, and many of them have told us that they wouldn't even be able to start on this project until 2022. In fact, most have said that at this point. So with that said, is the best course of action to come back in a year, knowing that this may not be something that happens this year, regardless?
Steve, do you have any comments? Should we just change this to two years or three years?
Well, here, here's the thing, Maggie, if, if you come in and say you don't have a contract, you're not ready, you will have 12 months on the building permit itself also. So, you know, I mean, if you want to wait 11 months, get a building permit, you have 12 months after that, and then I could issue a six-month extension to that.
Okay, I understand, okay, thank you.
I understand completely the dealing with contractors. I've had my own set of nightmares needing to spend a year to get a drywaller in here and so on. It's very difficult to get people in, that do good work in a short timeframe.
I know, and right now it's brutal, yeah, there's just too many people trying to do the same thing.
Okay, so shall we leave it at one year? Shall we amend it to two years? And I don't have a problem leaving, changing it to two years to give them more flexibility. We just can't leave it open-ended so that 30 years from now, when, if this doesn't get built, that approval's there and the entire neighborhood's changed.
Yeah, let me just check, I'm not sure you can do it for two years. I'm taking a look right now.
Yeah, I think it's, oh, I think it's in the code.
I think it's in the code too.
Yeah, so I, I think you have to leave it as is, and if for some unforeseen reason due to COVID, she would have to come back for, for an extension or reapproval. You know, I mean, I think she's amenable to that.
And we've done that before, unless circumstances are changed, we're forced to reissue the approval. So it's not a big deal. All right, so if these are going to be the conditions, I'll make a motion to approve the resol- resolution for site plan approval as discussed tonight.
Second.
Okay, and how do you, do you want to call a roll call vote, Marina?
Oh, I sure can, Chair Velestra?
Aye.
Okay, member Lightgibb?
Aye.
Member Loda?
Aye.
Member Marshall?
Aye.
And member Shannon?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, I think, I sensed your enthusiasm earlier in the meeting to do a roll call vote, Marina, so thank you very much, you did a great job with that.
I, I also wanted to commend her on pronouncing my last name correctly, that was stellar.
I'm here.
Okay, all right, with that said, I think, thank you for, Justin, for recording the notes, I really appreciate the note takers. That takes a lot of time. Are you willing to do that for some of the other resolutions as well?
Yep. Let's do it. Just, which one would you like to go to next?
I think we gotta do the variances first, before the site plan.
We've got the area variance here and, let me look through my folder. Setback or parking.
I think it'll be a lot of copy and paste probably between the two. Now, Mindy, do we have to give two separate variances for the two separate codes?
Yes.
Okay, so you make, you think it makes sense to make two separate resolutions, and they may happen to have many or all the same findings?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Um, would it feasible to just go, to just go through the one and then I can copy it onto the second one tomorrow? Or do you want to go through both of them? If they're gonna be the same, I'm just wondering if you need to go through them both?
Yeah, I think we need to make the comments, we don't need to get the document in its final form tonight, we just need to discuss it, so the final form represents our discussion.
You also, you also have to have a roll call vote, I believe, for the approval of the motions.
Parking first?
Be before us.
Sounds good, just give me one second here. How's this look?
Yep, looks like this one got filled in with the applicant's name this time. So, I think the description of this one, for the parking variance, we are still waiting for the parking space count, and I think Steve said he was gonna fill that in when he gets back to the office. So code required something like 100.
Yeah, I'll make sure that's filled in properly in the morning.
Okay, so I, it was approximately 156 were provided, and I think it was 159 were required. But Steve can fill that in tomorrow.
Okay.
As far as seeker goes, we talked about this before, it's a commercial accessory structure under 4,000 square feet. I think dot nine is the citation, Mindy, does that sound correct to you?
She said yes.
Okay.
It is.
Okay, and then Steve, you also found it to be exempt from Monroe County Planning, and I believe you actually talked to Monroe County Planning?
Yes, sir. I talked to Lynn, and I can't pronounce her last name, but in regards to our agreement under GML 239.
Yeah, the section there, it's under Schedule A, A1. It's a, it's a variance for a side setback. And the variance does not permit any property improvement to be close to a county or state highway or right-of-way.
Does that go after the 239M, A1?
I think that's the, the agreement with county planning, I'm not sure if we need to do the citation, but if Steve has reviewed the agreement and found it exempt, I, I think his statement should be acceptable.
Yep.
Okay, we don't have to do a waterfront review because it's a type two action in seeker. Okay, first one. Character of the neighborhood, I think we all found that this will improve the character of the region. And I know we had discussed this before, but the, we looked at the comprehensive plan and the local waterfront revitalization plan, and the improved access to the canal and improved waterfront amenities are very consistent with those. Now, I think, Joanne and Dave, I think you had actually dug up some citations at one of our workshop meetings for the LWRP and the comprehensive plan. So we can just leave a placeholder in there, if we can dig them up, we can stick some citations in.
Actually, what you just said, Justin, pretty much summarizes, summarizes it all.
Okay. Anything else on this one?
I'm good with that. Or you can say that in front of following, you can say the proposal follows the LWRP and comprehensive plan. By, by improving, yeah, there you go.
I think that's sufficient, there's probably no reason to cite specific quotes from the LWRP, I'm comfortable with that.
Wait, those came out previously.
I have a question, it's kind of picky, but the address on the application is for seven, eight, nine, Shane Place. And the resolution says eight, 10, Shane Place, is that gonna be, would that be a problem down the road or not?
Good observation, what does it need to be?
What does the application say?
Seven, eight and nine.
Then the resolution should say seven, eight, nine, is 10 involved also?
They didn't cite 10 on any of their applications, either site plan or, who is 10?
The block 32.
If I could speak up, number seven is the building across the street, which is where Simply Crepes and True Salon and several others, it is, the space is between number eight and 10, and that's what I have put on everything that I've completed, I don't know what anyone else has put on. But the space we're talking about is between Aladdin's, which is number eight, and lock 32, which is number 10.
Then we should leave it that way.
How was it noticed? What, what did the public notice say?
I think it said eight and 10, let me look.
Well, just as another interesting artifact, the tax bill, as it comes to us, always says seven, eight, nine. So there's a number of inconsistencies in how these various properties are referred to, so if someone was taking it from the tax map, then it is seven, eight, nine.
Because this is relating to the parking, wouldn't it be something encompassing all of those properties, if that's the way the calculation would be done?
So I think the amended site plan, well, this is the, first of the variance. And I think the variance is going to apply to all of the addresses on this parcel. So if it's seven, eight, nine and 10, maybe we should just say seven, eight, nine and 10.
Yeah, yeah. Um, Ms. Collins, could you just tell the board that you'd like to amend your application to include seven Shane Place?
Absolutely, I'm happy to make it be seven, eight, nine, 10.
Correct, yeah.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome. And then the minutes should reflect that amendment.
Should we vote in the affirmative to confirm the modification of that application, or just by this resolution alone, it's sufficient?
It's the applicant's change.
Okay.
Now, the action on this should actually be the variance for parking, right? Should I change this, this action?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, the construction of the pavilion requires parking.
Right, no, you're, you're, you're right, Justin Velestra. The action is the construction of the pavilion, the application is for an area variance.
Yep, gotcha.
And some little formatting stuff can get fixed later. So we're on B. So, I mean, my thought on this is the benefit sought could be achieved without the variance, but by granting the variance or getting additional landscaping.
I would agree with that.
So I think the summary is, by granting the variance, that more landscaping can be provided, which is beneficial to the community.
You may also want to include pub, you know, the pavilion itself is a public amenity for that part of the community. So in B, it should probably read, Justin, that the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some other feasible method. However, no, you already have that started on paragraph B. Um, however, um, the variance should be granted because.
Uh-huh. Um.
So I think above there under next to B, I think what she's saying is after the word feasible method. I think should say, but we feel the variance should be granted because, so between method and because, insert a couple of words, I think is what she's saying. Go up a sentence.
Where's, where's method? Oh, here, yeah.
Right there, yeah.
Okay. Um.
So keep feasible in.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then.
Keep method in.
And keep method.
And then say, but a variance should be granted because. Yeah, there you go. You're welcome.
And substantial, I, I think whatever the numbers were, we're only, we're only missing three parking spots out of something like a hundred fifty, which is not substantial.
Should I put in some placeholder numbers here that Steve can complete, uh, exactly later or?
Or you can just say the number of parking spaces involved is insignificant compared to the total, uh, to the ones already provided or something like that.
Uh-huh.
Yep.
And usually we just copy whatever we found for A for this.
Let's do that and see how it sounds.
I would add, just add, and landscaping after structure.
Uh-huh. We usually say it is self-created, right?
We usually say it is self-created, but that alone does not preclude granting a variance.
Uh, just up here.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Is the minimum necessary?
But I think we found the, the benefits would be to the community would diminish if we granted a smaller variance. Do we need any finding? We may not need any for G N H. You could just delete them. Uh, someone has a need to add something. And I don't believe we need any conditions. Any other thoughts?
We talked about one. I don't mind if it doesn't make it into the final, and it was simply that a bike rack would be located on the parcel, though not on the site plan as presented.
I think that goes in the site plan resolution.
Yeah, the site plan resolution, not the variances.
Sounds like a plan. Thank you.
Okay. And then under F, um, I mean, I think you could also say that the variance is the minimum amount necessary to provide relief because there's really no other, there's no other place to put parking. You know, the, the parcel will not support any more parking. Mm-hmm.
Thank you. I think that's a great addition.
And also a handicap parking space was added, correct?
Yeah. Ooh. Were any of the old parking spaces handicapped? One of the five?
Uh.
I thought no.
One was.
There was one.
There was one.
Maybe that would go under A. That it adds an additional handicap parking space. Handy. If you want to add that.
Yeah, I think it could go there.
I was wondering how long these applicants would stick around. I think you, after structure, if you're gonna copy and paste that, I think we, the structure and landscaping will improve it.
Right.
Oh, yeah, um.
Yep.
Oh, you mean add structure and landscaping up here?
Yeah.
Yep, and then add that to both, right?
Yep.
Okay.
And you can delete the E.
Oh, um.
Uh, we can, we can let someone else reform this too.
Oh, I see. I see what you're doing. Okay.
There you go. Okay, I think it's in pretty good shape. Anyone else have anything to add?
Yeah, we just need to add the correct, um, board members under Susan.
Oh, that's ancient.
We do, yes.
Yeah.
Wow.
Or just change the names and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Man, those are, those are really old names. I wonder where that's.
Nice.
But fortunately, the requirements under state law haven't changed in eternity.
No. That's a nice resolution.
Okay, uh, I'll make a motion to approve this resolution as discussed.
Second.
And how do you, you wanna call a roll call vote, Marina?
I will. Uh, Chair, uh, Chair Vlestra?
Yay.
Uh, Member Lightcap?
Yay.
Member Marshall?
Yay.
Member Loda?
Aye.
Member Shannon?
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Okay. Um, per Marina's suggestion, uh, we can copy and paste most of this into the next one. However, I think some of the parking changes will be different. The next one is for the setback.
Right.
I guess unless you want to just quickly copy and paste that whole thing in there, Justin, and we can just modify it.
Um, yeah, sure, I can go one by one or, um, let me just pull that up. Okay, setback. Yeah, however you want to do this. I've got both documents up here and I'm just sharing the setback one, so you can actually read it.
After the whereas parts, because you want to keep the, the content of the setback.
So right here, approximately, right?
Yeah, all that stuff can be replaced. What, will you start by the other resolution? I think that makes sense.
Yes.
How does this look? We in the ballpark here of? Um, so after the whereas is.
And, uh, just as the, the comment, we're not talking parking with this one, we're talking about constructing the pavilion right on the property line with a setback.
Mm-hmm. So I want to change.
No, that's fine. You can keep parking space in there. But C, um.
B will change.
B will change also.
C and E, you said?
Um.
C.
Or D.
Um, Mindy, what are your thoughts on this? Should they, a five-foot setbacks required in zero feet is provided on a numeric sense that's significant? We, even if it is substantial, that doesn't prevent us from granting a variance? Or you can say five feet isn't substantial?
I would say five feet isn't substantial.
In this case, because it's not. Oh, sorry.
Just by the, the, the numeric distance is not substantial. And I think that there's something about this being, um, the encroachments on, you know, to, to publicly owned land and not somebody's private property.
There's really not the nuisance. I mean, the, the setback would usually be because of the nuisance factor, right? And, and we're not really concerned about that in this case.
Right, so it's.
I think that's very good point, that the encroachment is on public property, not private property.
Right. And you can say publicly owned and used property. I mean, it's not just, you know.
Right.
This is very public space.
So I think it was a good discussion because it was certainly not everybody is going to get a zero-foot setback variance, um, when one is required.
Right, even if it's only a five-foot variance, right? Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, the other thing that we could say, because, I mean, it, it is a, you know, a zero setback is, is a big deal, is that the, um, and that public property is going to be used in connection with the pavilion. I mean, there's a direct relationship between the, um, the pavilion and the adjacent publicly owned property.
Uh, so is, is that kind of a similarity of use and users between the pavilion and the publicly owned property?
That's a better way of saying it. Thank you.
Might we want to, instead of saying, uh, publicly owned and used property, reference specifically the New York State Canal Corps? It might just tidy it up to prevent it from being applicable to other publicly owned property?
I don't know. I don't find it useful to distinguish that, but if others do.
But I'm just thinking if somebody has property buttoned up against, uh, not, not a library, but a school, um, there may not be similarity of use, so that statement may preclude it from being applicable, but nonetheless, doesn't matter either way.
And, uh, instead of similarity, how about contiguous?
Um. Yeah, the, the uses, um.
I mean, it's more than similar. It's a continuation. It's a, um.
Similarity and.
You can even say identity. Yeah.
The users and uses are identical.
Yeah. Yeah. Of the pavilion and publicly owned property, yeah. Are identical, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And that would also address David's concern about the school, because if, if we permitted a, a zero-foot setback, you wouldn't have the identity of use and users there.
Yeah, I was just thinking that the, um, the consumption of alcohol is, is one that stops, you know, clearly on the demarcated line, but the other ones are, you know, you can consume your food on both sides.
Mm-hmm.
If you wanted to address Justin's comment, you could say the general use instead of the uses.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. That's nice.
Yeah, so it's kind of a recreational.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So we're talking about that.
And we also wanted to add in C that it's only five feet.
Uh-huh. Um, yeah, the variance is only for five feet.
Yes. And then under F, the parcel will not support, um, a smaller variance. A smaller setback.
For the creation of the pavilion or?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I think again, it, it's, um, makes sense to point, you know, maybe it doesn't make sense to state anything about minimum necessary. I guess that's fine. I was thinking we could state that they could make the building smaller, but then the benefit would be smaller. But then we wouldn't get what we have. So, okay, leave it alone.
You could take F and end it with whilst still providing, uh, the desired amenities or something to, to add to it. You know, to Justin's point, which is, um, you could make it smaller. You could set it back, but you'd lose something else. And how to word that might be valuable at the end of that sentence.
Right, um, and maybe the idea there is that a smaller pavilion would not achieve the applicant's intended result. Right, the proposed benefits.
Yeah, so maybe just an and right after amenities and not achieve the applicant's. Yeah, that's good.
It'd be a doghouse or something.
Right.
So again, the benefit outweighs the impact, which is a key thing.
I think it's important in both of these. Oh, go ahead, Mindy. I'm sorry.
No, I'll wait till you're done. Go ahead.
Oh, I, I was simply gonna say, I think it's important in both of these, um, resolutions to get the point across that we are balancing the variance with the amenities and the positive elements that the community is receiving. And I think the more often we can say that and that we made that determination to get those amenities, the better.
Yeah, I mean, it, the whole thing. Yeah, I mean, it the whole thing is is a balancing test, but there are criteria that are that are within the balancing test. So I think that we need to do a little more than just repeat that it's the only thing that we we have to grant the variance because we've made a determination that the balancing of the equities favors the applicants here.
Okay, is there any other characteristics of the property we want to talk about? I think this is, I think this looks good to me. So Dave, I know you haven't been through many of these variances, but oftentimes we talk very detailed matters about why it makes sense for this particular property so that we can pin the variance to a particular property. But I think we've already gone to that level of detail.
Perfect.
Is really what this is supposed to be for is a granting relief due to the uniqueness of the property. Not the uniqueness of the of the applicant's desires.
Oh, don't go there.
Okay, we won't.
And should we keep the address up at the top as eight, 10? Because that's really where the variance is. It's not anywhere else in the parcel, or should we change it?
Well, the variance is the entire parcel, right?
Right. We should we should make it consistent.
Okay, so seven, eight, nine, 10 then?
Yes.
Just copy that over from the other one.
And then the the date dropped down to the second line.
Okay. Still, that happened on the other one, too.
And there's the address in there, too.
What was that, Justin?
You fix it.
Okay. Back down to the bottom.
And then the the board members.
Man, I don't know how that was so far off.
I thought we copied that part, though. Oh, you know what happened is I pasted it in and the original one just got moved down.
Okay.
I think so. I need to actually get rid of this blank. And then we're looking good up here.
Oh, you forgot the signature at the bottom. Oh.
Okay, let's try that again. Okay, so you get this part and then. This is I'm not used to using a word. Sorry about this. It's on my Google Doc. It ends right here, right?
Yes.
Sure. So what is happening with? I gotta move slower so that I don't throw text all over the place.
Okay, are we done with this? So I'll make a motion to approve the variance for the reasons discussed.
Second.
Okay, Marina, do you want to call a vote?
Okay, Chairperson Velestra?
Yes.
Member Lightgen?
Yes.
Member Loda?
Hi.
Member Shannon?
Hi.
And member Marshall?
Hi.
Motion carries.
Okay, well, we have one more left, which is the site plans. Thank you, everyone, for diligently going through this.
Which is eligible. And we're going to do the same thing with the the project address, right?
Oh, my my computer's telling me my battery's running low.
Oh, no.
Uh-oh.
We got it. We we're we have a cutoff time.
Plug it in.
You guys can get started on this. I'm going to go ahead and find a charger.
All right. Okay. We could on the seeker. No. Yeah, under 4,000 square feet. Okay. Okay. How much of this can come off of the last variance?
Justin?
Seems like two could.
Yeah, let's try that. Conforms with.
Justin, in paragraph one, the building inspector has reviewed the project and the applicant has applied for and received the required variances.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Vehicular traffic and circulation.
No changes are being proposed to that.
Okay. Bicycleist access and circulation, no changes proposed?
You could say limited. Right by creating certain walkways and entrance areas. Is it enough to matter or no?
I mean, there's no real bicycle pathway there. You've got to walk your bike anyway.
Yeah.
Right, so you're not it's not really changing bicyclist access.
They ride on the street.
Well, you can say that pedestrian access is improved and they're proposing to increase bicycle. What do you call them?
Racks.
Bike racks.
Yes.
And in this case, I would say addition of bike racks or placement of bike racks on the parcel was planned. We wouldn't want somebody to read this and assume it's this specific area of improvement.
Okay, so it look okay?
Yeah.
Fully compatible. I don't know if anything else needs to be said.
Well, one adjacent use of the farm.
No.
And we had it brought up that one of the adjacent uses is also a single family home. But the predominant usage in the area is commercial.
Public access. The canal and the canal trail.
What if instead you were to say the the site plan is for an interior location within the parcel that is, you know, fully compatible with the surrounding uses?
Just say it doesn't extend to adjacent uses.
Yeah.
Well, there's also a lar- large distance between the proposed locations and any other private property.
That's not adjacent, though.
Well, it's it's really between eight and 10 and the right? So the the uses are are continuous or are identical to the the neighboring uses and any residential parcel is not adjacent to that because there's a building and everything buffering it.
The building is on the parcel.
It's the same parcel, though.
Yeah, I think the issue here is that it's fully consistent with all of the commercial and retail uses in Shane Place. It enhances all of the other commercial uses in the adjacent commercial and retail parcels.
Already in place.
Right.
Yeah, I think that's fine. What if it added that established in Shane Place and the existing parcel? Is that even necessary?
No, it's there only talks about adjacent uses.
Okay, good enough. Done. I would just say existing off-street parking, loading and access is sufficient.
One handicap parking spot is added.
Yeah. Do we want to make any reference to the variance previously granted or no?
I think it makes sense to a maybe just say that finding supporting the parking situation are explained in the variance.
Finding supporting parking adequacy.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Variance findings.
We've got a couple of findings in the same sentence.
You can say resolution, parking variance resolution.
Thank you.
No, vastly improved.
In terms of landscaping, screening landscaping is.
Enhanced.
Enhanced. All right, now you've just got an open space.
Yeah. There's still no screening between the handicap and the the walkway there in front and around the cars, but I don't find that necessary. I don't know if we need to make comment.
You didn't really have it before either, though, right? So.
Not at all. So it is an improvement. We just don't require any additional screening in in front. In front of the cars parked in the handicap because it immediately goes to a walkway. And then you have to the right anyway, in front of the second vehicle, you have an opening into the pavilion. So there would be clear vision from the pavilion to the to handicap spots, but I don't find that to be problematic.
Yeah, further landscaping would detract from access.
Yeah.
Well, to bring up a couple other things of landscaping, I wasn't sure it was worth bringing up in the meeting. We talked about getting native species a couple meetings back. At least with the trees and neither of these trees are exactly native to our area, but I'm not sure that isn't something I thought was a big deal. So the paper bark maple, I think is a Korean tree. But it's a common ornamental in our area. And the honey locust is at least native to Pennsylvania. It's not native to here, which I don't have a problem with that. And I was initially wondering, well, that could retrieve the honey locust of the cultivars a fairly narrow canopy. It's only, I think it was 40 feet tall, but 20 feet wide. But again, I'm not really interested in debating that. I think they put a lot of work into this landscaping plan. And I'm not sure that I'm interested. Actually, I'm not interested in micromanaging that or getting more involved in that. I just thought I'd share my thoughts.
I agree.
Yeah, I I agree with you as well. I I did look at the list and noticed that there were some species that were not native. But our our code does not require native species. It only encourages it. And and so I thought that it wasn't really worth fighting that battle. And the plants did not seem to be on an invasive species list. They were just not necessarily native from what I saw, so it it didn't bother me too much.
Yeah, just so you know, she went to a professional landscaper who's been in the business for over 40 years to design the landscaping that's going into the pavilion area.
And you know, in regard to the honey maple, you know, with climate change, our zone is even changing. So who knows? It may, you know, it might it might be now native to our zone where previously it wasn't.
Yeah, well, I could tell you I can find lots of honey locusts in Minden Pond's Park.
Right, for example.
Yeah. And likewise, Norway maples aren't native to here, but they're all over the place.
They're invasive, though. I hang out with Alisa, maybe. I think that was I just channeled Alisa. Where are we?
Signage. And there's basically signage is not proposed. Is that right?
Yeah. Just placage. You know, at some point, it would be nice, you know, if the village recognized her father. You know, and didn't didn't leave it up to to her. And, you know, in in a sense, that would be recognizing her contribution to to the village. But can talk about that.
Okay, so for lighting, I think new lighting fixtures are proposed to to improve safety.
Yeah, maybe he mentioned dark sky compliance.
Yeah, to meet code and improve safety.
Should I mention which parts of code about dark sky compliance and color temperature or just leave it as is?
Well, the building inspector can't. He has to review that when granting a building permit, so. And the applicant already said it was going to comply with the requirements, so I I I don't know if we need to enumerate on any of that, but. But they're proposing something to improve it is the point, and Steve was content with it.
Sounds good. Um, should we mention the, uh?
Yeah, rain guard is being proposed to, uh, control water runoff.
That'll be nice.
Which also, just so you know, gives us some bonus points as far as some other things as far as energy compliance.
That's great.
No, that was great work you did, Steve, and working with them to get that. Thank you. And whatever I am, that's such a wonderful thing, the amount of landscaping added here and converting pavement to landscaping is fantastic. It'll be beautiful and attract the public.
You know, this is, I was wondering why spell check wasn't catching this. A C U R is an Indonesian dagger.
We don't want those systems here.
I don't think so.
And that, that's just no changes are proposed. I think that's the same, no changes are proposed.
Yeah. And she mentioned, uh, snow removal. Uh, she said that it would be facilitated, I think, because there's less parking, right?
There's less, there's less snow removal required with the new plan.
And they already had a plan in place for the other parking.
Yep. Should I mention that too, or say, uh, or just say there's less snow removal required?
I'm okay with a simple one-sentence description.
Okay.
We don't need to, we don't need to go on forever here.
I think this one says a proposal will enhance the health, safety and general welfare of adjacent property owners.
And the community.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, that's an important part. Mr. Fire Marshal, any observations?
Access has been accounted for. I don't know how you want to state that, but, uh, fire lane access has been accounted for within the plan.
Okay.
And emergency vehicle access is adequate?
Yes, fire lane, same thing.
Okay.
Any other findings?
You want to state, uh, we already stated the thing about the comprehensive plan. That was the first one. Okay.
We need to make any statement on the bike rack? You guys mentioned to bring it up here.
I think that'll be in conditions of approval.
Okay.
Might be deleting these then.
So again, we agreed to waive the balance of application requirements. We already discussed that in our meeting. Oh, we talked about that for the other application, sorry, the residential one. Um. So I believe the consensus, is this correct, is that, um, the plans before us are adequate to evaluate the proposal? Is that everyone's opinion?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so other conditions, um, I had noted, I think, four conditions we wanted to put in here, one for lighting, one for flexible seating, one for bike racks, and one for the fire pit.
Okay.
So I think for the fire pit shall be, um, location shall be re- reviewed by the building inspector for appropriateness.
Reviewed and approved.
And fire chief. Slash fire chief.
Yeah, fire marshal slash building inspector. I'm, I'm three hats. Try foot bike rack location will also be improved, uh, approved by the building inspector.
Yeah, so I think we said the bike rack location.
Location, right.
Yes, quantity and location, we're correct.
Sorry, the, can you say that again?
Yeah.
Okay.
Location and quantity.
Lighting will meet code and be approved by historic preservation and luminary will be approved by the historic preservation board.
I don't remember, well, seating.
I think we said, um, since this is outdoor seating and is not permanently attached, what we had talked about was we were okay with a flexible seating arrangement. I just thought that might be worth mentioning.
How is that a condition?
Not really.
So get rid of it? Or say seating layout shall be appropriate, shall be, um, reviewed by the building inspector?
It won't be, though.
Well, it will be if he, if he has a problem with it.
Yeah, if I have a problem with it, then I deal with it. But I don't think you need to make any condition on it because it is flexible seating.
Is there any reason then to simply say, uh, no permanent seating shall be erected as part of this site plan review?
Well, they haven't applied for any seating.
Perfect. So then to Susan's point, no comments.
Right. Right.
Okay.
And if they were to erect something, um, permanent, then that would be a violation of the site plan.
Perfect. So then I don't think anything's necessary. I agree with that.
Yeah.
Are we really at the end?
Yeah, gotta, I gotta take the dog out here, so come on.
I just have one question. I don't know the answer to, bigger picture. When doing a site plan review for this number nine, because it's part of a parcel that's seven through 10, when we approve it, we don't have to specifically say the site plan is just number nine, right? It, it applies to the whole broad spectrum of parcel, right?
Correct, because the site plan is for the parcel, not for the, an address within the parcel.
Perfect.
That's right, yeah.
And I think a big debate is, which comes up from time to time, is do we look at just the project at hand? Or do we look at other parts of the parcel? And I think that's kind of on a case-by-case basis. But it doesn't make sense, I think, to look at areas across the street, for example, with this. Well, we're not aware of any, uh, code violations, right, have been brought to us.
Correct. And again, this is a learning experience for me. When I look at bike rack location and quantity, in that we're not saying parcel, it's presumed to be the aggregate parcel. And so, again, going back to the design that, uh, Ms. Collins may, um, put for, you know, finalize, that spot that currently doesn't have, um, landscaping could become landscaping without issue, right?
Yes, as long as it's in seven, eight, nine, 10.
Yeah, okay, good. That's all I need to know. Thanks.
So after.
Remember names for after this one.
Yeah, that's nice. Um, after we do this, so they, they still have an application in front of the H P B? Or is it just Steve's approval on?
No, I have a, I have an application that has to be approved by the H P B on March 8th.
Okay.
All right, come on, ready to do a happy dance?
We can't see you.
I'll make a motion to approve the site plan for seven, eight, nine, 10 Shane Place for the reasons stated.
Second.
All right, Marina, you're up.
Okay, Chair Velstra?
Aye.
Member Lightgeb?
Aye.
Member Loda?
Aye.
Member Shannon?
Aye.
And member Marshall?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I, I have to say, uh, thank you to all of you. This has been a, um, long journey. Uh, it's a great thing for the village and all the work everybody put in, a- as I said earlier, to make it a much better project. I think, um, everybody should be proud and happy with what you've done here.
And thank you too, Steve. You did a great deal of work on it also.
Yeah.
All right, well, I'm doing a happy dance. You can't see me, but I gotta take the dog out.
Well, Steve, I'm surprised you stepped around this long, but you made some nice contributions here to some of the, um, conditions and so on. So thank you. I know this is tedious. I wish I knew of a better way to get these done with less tedium. But we always do a better job doing this as a group.
Uh, you know, I mean, you're, you're thorough. That's, that's the biggest thing. You're thorough and it's hard to question some, an action when it's been thoroughly vetted. So that's, that's the better part of it.
Okay, um, so I think that resolves our applications. So, Mr. Lightgeb, thank you for being willing to do the minutes and, and revisions. Can you forward those out to Marina and myself and Mindy? And I think we'll let Marina fix the formatting of it and make a few tweaks.
Yeah, I'll make sure the numbers get in for the parking in the morning.
Yeah, I guess you can copy Steve's tune on that, Susan.
I don't know, what, do you have something else that you want to accomplish tonight, Justin? Then I would like to take a moment and just to say to Justin, Lightgeb, what a pleasure it's been working with you. Wow, you really, um, you know, upped our skill set considerably. And, um, I very much, you're, appreciate your, um, also very often seemed like the, uh, senior statesman approach. And so have, have fun on, uh, the Board of Trustees. And, um, come, come back and, you know, uh, don't give us a hard time.
Thank you so much. Yeah, I, I have really thoroughly enjoyed working with this whole group and I've learned a tremendous amount. And it's, um, it is a very thorough group and, and, um, this group really looks at, at everything that's necessary. And, and, uh, it's also been a pleasure to work with. And, uh, a very warm and inviting and a great place to, uh, to come and learn and, and work on problems to improve our community. So thank you all for taking me under your wing and, uh, I'll definitely always look fondly back on, on this experience.
You're still gonna be a great asset to the village, Justin, no matter what. So thank you.
Absolutely. Yeah.
My, um, I'll go ahead, Steve.
All right, I'm just saying goodnight, all. Dogs, dogs, come on.
All right, goodnight, Steve. Thank you.
Go ahead, Justin.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I know Marina is new, so thank you Marina for all your work behind the scenes. And Marina is interested in hearing from us to get some clarification of how she can assist us. And, uh, so at some point, uh, later in the week, I'd like to have a discussion with her. If anyone else wants to participate in any of that, I also had, had some draft documents that are floating around that kind of explain some of the things that need to get done. I can forward them around to everybody else. If anyone has thoughts, we can chime in. But I think this could be an ongoing discussion. But I would have to say that Marina's been super friendly every time I've called the, the office. And she's, uh, even stayed friendly through the email debacle. I don't know how you did that. That, that must have been a, a massive challenge.
It's no problem. I don't mind helping out.
Justin, uh, might we want to, um, recognize Mike Reynolds as well? I believe he was appointed as alternate at the last board meeting. How do we, is he now a, a member that we should in our logs, uh, references to his, uh, joining us tonight? How does that work?
Um, I haven't heard anything new with his, is, first of all, is he online? I see one person is online.
Uh, yeah, it looks like M J R is, there he is.
Oh, there he is. Hi, Mike.
He's me.
Hello, Mike.
I can ask him to unmute.
Hi, you guys have had a long night, so you don't need to hear anything from me, so goodnight.
Thank you, Mike. Um, yeah, we haven't received, I haven't heard anything about his email address and stuff like that from the clerk yet. So I assume he's still getting oriented, but, uh, welcome, Mike. And, um, sure, we'll be seeing more of you in the future. And, uh, there's, uh, quite a bit to learn about the whole process here, but you, your observations of everything tonight should be good.
Thank you.
So does anything, one else have anything to add?
I just wondered about the minutes of January. They were sent in the packet, but they weren't on the agenda. If we just carry them over to next time?
I am pretty much fine with that.
Are, um, if there's nothing else, are we also considering an executive session or an attorney-client session after?
Yeah, I think a five or 10-minute attorney-client session after the close of the public hearing would be in order. And that would be, um, Justin Lightgeb, Susan, Joanne, and David.
Okay, we, we would adjourn the meeting after the attorney-client session, correct?
Yes, I'll be staying online, um, so that you can all adjourn the meeting with a vote after the attorney-client session.
No, the, the meeting will be ended and then we'll have an attorney-client session.
Okay.
Oh, the end for me otherwise, but okay.
Well, I think it depends on if it's an executive session or an attorney-client session.
Right. We're not doing an executive session. We're gonna have an attorney-client session.
Understood.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, well, with that, it's been a long discussion. Thank you, everybody. I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
How do you vote? Aye.
Okay, I have that.